Well, hello, everybody, and welcome this evening. It's wonderful to see so many of you here in the audience for this special night for the city of Boise. We're going to go ahead and start with an invocation, which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the roll call. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
And next up, we have a request for approval of the minutes from the Strategic Planning Session and Regular Day Meeting of December 14th.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of December 14th, the Strategic Planning Session and the Evening Meeting. Second.
We have motion in a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion to amend the January 4th agenda. I move that we pull Resolution 2022 from the Consent Agenda for consideration at a later date. There were some papers that were not completed yet, and I also move that we defer Resolution 3122 to a date certain of January 11th due to a delay with documents. Second.
Up to second, Council President. We can't.
Okay, just to clarify, I thought I said Resolution 2222 in the first.
Yep, okay, so Resolutions 2222 and 32.
3120.
31, yep, the home one, okay.
Thank you.
So was this a motion to approve the consent agenda with those pulled?
Yeah, to remove the one and defer the other one till January 11th.
Okay. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, and now we have the rest of the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the two changes previously made. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could just briefly, there's one resolution on the consent agenda for consultant to carry through the work of the resolution that the council passed earlier on diversity, equity, inclusion. I would like to thank the mayor's office for carrying that work forward and look forward to seeing the outcome of it, and also look forward to recognizing or understanding as a city council how we can create a parallel process for ourselves, and want to always continue to recognize council member Sanchez's very deep interest in this subject. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing on first reading, so we'll move on to second reading where we have one ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-58-21, an ordinance, CAR21-00020, Boise Independent School District and Boise City Airport, for property located at 8373 West Victory Road annexing 128 acres, and for property located at 6755 West Victory Road annexing 4.25 acres of certain land and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 128 acres as A-1A open land and annexing 4.25 acres as M-1D light industrial with design review, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
And next up, we have one on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of Ordinance 5921 be dispensed with and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-59-21, an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 3, Section 4, Subsection 20 Boise City Code to include new language addressing unpermitted work in the historic districts and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that Ordinance 5921 be approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Your, your office of community engagement mayor did an outstanding job and picked a great dog for the photo too. I've got to say it's truly an honor. I, I have one last thing before I read you of myself on the dais, but I wanted to make sure if there was anyone else that had anything to say, then please go ahead before I do my last remarks.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I had the good fortune of meeting UTJ through our mutual friend Nico, Nico Martinez, now Negrete. And what I love about that first meeting with you was the sight of you. You were wearing a silver puffer jacket with a baseball cap to the side. And I believe your rap name was Adrenaline Rush. And I love that. I love the fact that I met you because of Nico. And Nico was the person you chose to be your vice president when you were at ASBSU. And to me, that, that is exactly what I want to see in our leaders. I want to see our leaders not talking about how they're going to serve, for example, the Latinx community, but how they're going to make room for us at the leadership table. And that's who you've been. You have not spoken about the good work. You've done the good work. And I will miss you very, very much because when you walk into a space where it feels like no one knows you, people are wondering how you got there to have one person who can go, I know her. I know why she's here. And thank you for being not just a wonderful representative for our city, but thank you also for being a wonderful and loving colleague. Thank you TJ, and I will miss you so much.
Those were wonderful words, Council President Protem. I sadly missed TJ's rap days of puffer jackets, but I do remember in 2008 seeing TJ for the first time up on the stage at the Morrison Center for the Ada County Democratic Caucus, the first year that Obama ran. And he had so much energy and was so exciting. And it was like, oh, okay. You know, I was pretty new into politics in Idaho at the time, but I thought, you know, if young people like this guy are in politics, you know, maybe there's a place for me in politics too. And it was, it was very cool just seeing you in that space and really embodying it. Fast forward to 2014, TJ and I were both running uphill battles for seats that we were unlikely to win in, you know, various places. And I still remember TJ's kindness after we both lost. I think I was a little bit more heartbroken for your loss than I was my own and a little bit more surprised. But just the compassion that he showed me, you know, while he had suffered the same fate was really telling about his character. And then being able to serve alongside TJ in the city we both love, even though we live basically on different sides of the city, we both have a deep love for Boise. And so it's been really wonderful to serve alongside you, serve the city we love from across town. And I look forward to play dates at Cottonwood Park. And I hope that you're not a stranger as you get your Tuesday nights back. Thank you so much TJ. I've loved serving alongside you.
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Thompson, I'm really excited for you today. I'm excited for you to get to spend more time with your, your incredible family. I think what we've talked about so far is sort of this highlight reel of all the things that Councilmember Thompson has done for our city. And that highlight reel is really important and all those, all those big things are really significant. But I think sometimes it's some of the small things that people do that really define their character. And I want to share just kind of my own experience with you. I've had the opportunity to serve with you up here for two years, but I've known you for much longer than that. And I remember like Councilmember Woodings being a young person in this community, seeing you up here and realizing that a 30-year-old could be making big decisions and doing big things for the city. And it was really, really inspiring. And I remember sitting out in the audience. And I remember you listening with curiosity to every single thing that everybody had to say. And I remember one very specific moment where at the end, when it came time to make a decision and you talked like we always do at the end, and you had said that you had changed your mind from what you had previously thought about a specific topic because of the public's testimony. And as a young, you know, in their twenties organizational leader who thought that they knew everything, that was a really, really important lesson that I learned about how it's never too late and how it's courageous to change your mind and to be willing to listen to everybody in a way that allows you to be influenced and to learn and to grow. And that might seem like a really small thing that just happened at one meeting, but that's something that I took forward with me with my career, both at the Boise Bicycle Project and that I'll try to carry on for you here as a city council member. I am going to try to pay you back for your description, each of our, our council members here. If I could think of one word to describe you TJ, and it was perfectly captured in the speech that you just gave is authentic. TJ is TJ. You always will be. And you are the authenticity of our city. And I want to thank you for being that for all these years. Thanks, buddy.
Madam Mayor. TJ, thanks. I mean, thanks for mentoring me, for showing people how to be a dignified, kind, thoughtful. Councilmember Hallie Burden stole one of my compliments. I've seen you change your mind and I've learned from that. But I also want to recognize your service to our country in the United States Air Force, your service to this city for 12 years, your service to your family, your service to many, many people in this community who frankly don't get the attention and the care that they deserve, your service to its animals. I met TJ Thompson vaccinating dogs in the snow for people who couldn't afford vaccines. There were cats there as well. And I just really want to thank you for sitting next to me and being warm, friendly and thoughtful, and really for showing me the way on how to do this very difficult job. I'm going to miss you tremendously. I'm going to hunt you down and find you and sit down and enjoy some laughs with you. But, but I really, from the bottom of my heart, like everyone here, I'm going to miss seeing you every week. I wish you the best and I hope you enjoy your time with your family. In some ways, I envy them a little bit. How do you like them apples TJ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Beyond the things that we did to honor you TJ, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the really kind words that you said about me. But more importantly, I'd like to, to give them back to you because I also learned a lot from you. I learned how to work with someone who was so passionate that they knew they had to get something done and help them figure out how to make that happen. And in doing so, I had to figure out how to make that happen. And so I learned so much from that. But most importantly, I'd like to recognize that although TJ always had a special place in his heart for the part of the city that he lives in, he came to the city to serve everyone and serve the whole city. And I think even as we go into this era where we have council districts, how important that is, how important it is to recognize that we are a whole city. We're not parts. And the parts together make that city a better city, not those parts separately. And you embodied that despite or as you also very much advocated for the part of the city that you lived in. So thank you for that example. I hope it's one that carries forward.
Thank you so much again to my amazing colleagues that I've had. The honor's been all, all mine to be able to serve with people of your caliber. It's, it's just unbelievable that I had this experience. So goodbye. But before I step down from the dais, and also I hope that's the last time I ever hear of my rap days at Bogies. That wasn't a very successful career, for me at least. Before I step down from the dais, I leave you with one song that I hope sums up my time here. Almost eight years ago, I adopted a dog that became my favorite furry family member. She was a rescue from a hoarder, one of 61 dogs that was living in an extremely small living environment. Dogs were stacked on top of each other, buried in their own feces. Several died, but most were saved by Sonoma Humane Society. My pup was one of them. So we named our saved pup Soma from Sonoma. She acquired diabetes a few years ago, lost her sight within weeks as a result of the, the full cataracts. She gets along great now. She's doing very well. Animal hoarding though is animal cruelty and now treated as such in our code because of Soma from Sonoma. So as I leave office, I dedicate a final tune to her. She changed the city for animals through me. Thank you again to my wife, my daughter and my dog. This goes out to my best friend. Let me introduce one of our outstanding local musicians and artists whom I encourage you all to follow on social media and seek out whenever she is playing at one of our many fine local Boise venues. Please give it up for Ashley Rose.
Thank you so much TJ. I'm honored to be here, both as a citizen in Boise and a dog lover. I remember learning of the city ordinance exchanges that protected animals several years ago and being impressed by that as it impacts creatures that I love. So I was so delighted when you asked for me to come here and sing for you today.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you so much, Ashley Rose. Goodbye.
Well, thank you again TJ and congratulations on this next chapter. And now we're going to swear in our new council members, those that city Boise residents said ought to be up here making decisions for the next two years because we're moving into districts. So we have, first we'll go in order. So first seat one, Lucy Willetts. Seat three, Lisa Sanchez, and then seat five, Holly Woodings. And I just want to say this is, I, I still remember the first time I stood up here and Lucy, as you come up for the first time. It was actually in the depot at that point. But what a unique experience it is and an incredible honor to know that you've been trusted by your friends, your neighbors, your family, your fellow residents of this great city to serve. And so I want to congratulate the three of you on terms and look forward to working with the three of you. But with that, I'll ask you, if you'd come on up right here with and join Councilmember-elect Willetts and her family to administer the oath of office. I think it goes on automatically, maybe.
If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I withhold, that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I, and the Constitution of the state of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the state of Idaho.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties. As a council member in the city of Boise.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So help me God. Well TJ did such a remarkable job with his remarks that were prepared, mine or not, they're from the heart, but nevertheless tender as well. First of all, thank you TJ. Thank you to your family. It's so much work. I'm just getting a taste of that. And we need to honor those who are willing to serve. So thank you. I can appreciate the time that you want to spend with your family. And you know, I, I said this during the campaign, but one of the reasons that I ran was that I was becoming an empty nester because I knew what this would take. First of all, you know, it's me up here, but there are 10 people out there that are here accompanying me as friends and family. But even more than that, there are hundreds of people who helped me get here. You know, it's just not me standing here. It's hundreds of people behind me who did so much work to make this happen. And I am grateful to them. I am thankful to them. Everyone on this podium has run for office and they know how hard it is. And I, you can't do it alone. And you're not just, you're not just you. You're a whole team and I'm grateful for that team. I'm also grateful for my family who helped me every step of the way to be here today and my extended family that's not able to be here. You know, we are in so much, where we come from, but also who we surround ourselves with. And there are many people in my life that aren't here, but I know that are here in spirit, who aren't here physically or even on this earth, but I'm, I know that they're here today. You know, I love this community. It's why I ran. We have an amazing community full of heart, full of warmth and full of challenges. And it takes good people who, who want to run and who want to help engage in those challenges. I am grateful to the current city council folks for their warm welcome, for the New Kid on the Block. I do not have any rap ability nor any musical inclination, but I do like a good 1990s band. So I'll slip in the New Kids on the Block reference, Step by Step, their best song. So thank you for your warm welcome. I've had a great, a great introduction. We all live here because we love it. And it's that heart that keeps us a community. And it's the people that make a community. It's not just the geography. But I do think that we are special and there's a reason why people are moving here is because they want what we have. They want a safe community. They want a community that takes care of each other. You know, my, my political hero Ronald Reagan talked about America being the shining city on the hill. And I think Boise is the shining city amongst the hills. And I look forward to serving it, serving the people of West Boise and ensuring that we have a place for all in Boise. Thank you. All right, Lisa, if you'll please raise your white, right hand. I Lisa Sanchez.
I Lisa Sanchez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution of the state of Idaho.
And that to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
For the city of Boise City.
The city of Boise City.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the honor of administering the oath. It means so much. I first would like to thank my brother Candy Ortiz and my nephew Nicholas Ortiz for traveling from Nampa in the snowstorm to be here to represent our family. Thank you so much for doing that. And as proud as I am of being able to represent our city for another two years, to represent District Three, I am incredibly proud of my nephew for receiving his letter from Boise State saying that he is welcome to attend the university. So finally a legacy. But now I hear it might be ASU. We'll see. We'll do our, we'll do our part. It, there are times when I sit and I think back about how I got here. And my favorite part about ruminating on that is thinking about all the people that it took for me to be the one standing in front of you. It took Charity Strong, my campaign manager, whose name fits her perfectly, by the way. I met Charity at Boise State University as I was completing my degree. And she very generously offered to tutor me in math so I could finally get that diploma. Thank you Charity. And she has consistently been that person. When I am pursuing a goal, she has offered up her friendship and service. So thank you Charity for again helping us with this campaign. I also see my friend Asa Nims, who also helped chart a path for me. Asa and I met at Boise State at Towers Hall. He was the only white guy in a group of Mexicans. He was my TJ. And he was also the first person to let me know about the racism that existed at my university. And it must've been very hard for him to share that information with me because it, it came from a mutual friend. And rather than get upset about it, I realized that just as it's up to Boise State University to help our students who graduate from high school unprepared to do college level math. And then when they get to the university, they have to be, they have to pay for remedial courses until they get up to the, up to speed, till they can graduate with that degree. It is also up to, to the university to prepare our students to be good members of this community where they learn how to interact with the public, with their colleagues, with their neighbors, with dignity and respect. And so Asa, thank you so much for being brave all those years ago and giving my life a purpose. And also for being the graphic artist for my campaign. Thank you. There's a number of people in this room today who I have similar stories of where their willingness to bring forward and speak up has helped me, has helped me on this path. And I also want to thank every single person who decided to point out a flaw or where I have fallen short. You have been very helpful to me as well because that's the only way we can get better is if we know that there is an area where we need to focus on and we need to improve. And it is one of the hardest things for us to do is to, is to hear that feedback that is not always positive. It's not always applause. It is a finger pointed in your face. And so I thank you for that as well. Because what you've done is you've also reminded me, it is a privilege and an honor to serve in this role. And that anytime somebody criticizes us, it's because they love their community and they just want us to do better. So I'm hoping as, as I move forward into the next two years, that I, that I do a better job than the one that I've done over the past four years. And, but if there's something I'd like to leave you with, it's never for one minute think that I take this opportunity for granted. There are times when I have become very outspoken in how I feel about the status quo. And there are times when the focus has been on that outspokenness rather than the issue. And so that is an area where I'm going to try to do better because I never want it to be about the messenger. I want it to be about the message and how we can improve our community together. So please do everything you can to help identify people in other parts of Boise who would be good members of our council in the coming years. Because we are going through a transition right now and we have had our city divided up into districts. Something that the people of Boise did not have a say in. Well, they do have a say in going forward. Help identify those people. I did not realize how scared people are to run for office. I had no idea. It's probably a good thing. As they say, sometimes ignorance is bliss. I didn't realize that this is the, somebody's worst nightmare is having to run for office. And even a bigger nightmare to actually win and have to serve. But I tell you, over the past four years, I have met brilliant people, good-hearted people, the kind of people that we described tonight in our, in our colleague Councilman Thompson. But they're too afraid to run because of the hateful rhetoric that we all experienced during this last campaign. Do not let that deter you. Your community needs you. Please step forward. Run for office. Run for one of these seats in 2023. We absolutely need you. I didn't anticipate that that's, that I would have a call to action during the speech, but, but it is important. And so as community members, we need to help identify those folks because clean water is not Republican. It's not Democrat. It's a human need. Shelter, it's a human need. Food accessibility, it's a human need. Having a safe environment to raise our children, it's a human need. And so please. And so please get out there, identify those people, help them win those races in 2023 so that we can continue to do good work on behalf of everybody in the City of Boise. Thanks for the second chance.
Right, you raise your right hand. I, Holly Woodings.
I, Holly Woodings.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
As a council member.
As a council member.
Perform the duties expected of me for the City of Boise.
Perform the duties expected of me for the City of Boise.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone, for being here among our latest foray with the Greek alphabet. And I think that everybody's sick right now. I know I have several family members who couldn't be here tonight because they were touched by COVID. But I do have my close, immediate family here who just mean the absolute world to me. My daughter Mary, my son Arthur, and my husband Ryan, as well as some fierce women who have always had my back, which I appreciate very, very much. It really takes a lot of people to help someone run for office and help someone win office. I often joke that it's like a marketing campaign in the middle of the nerdiest job that someone can possibly do. Where you don't really have anything flashy to talk about, but you really have to make it look great and exciting and make it look like you're the most wonderful person on the planet, even though you don't do anything that's really sexy. Somehow people know how to make that actually look great and make people excited about it. And so I really appreciate the folks who gave me their time, talent, and treasure to help me win reelection. And I wasn't really sure how reelection was going to go because this is our first time running in council districts. I've made a lot of really tough decisions that impact this district that I now serve. And I was not sure how people were going to feel about some of those decisions. And if they were going to choose to send me back to this dais to continue to make hard decisions, to continue to weigh every single piece of testimony, every single piece of factual evidence, every piece of strategic intention that our city has in order to make the best decisions that we possibly can for our residents, for our businesses, for our neighbors, and for the bright, bright, brilliant future of our city. So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I look forward to serving you for two more years. And as always, feel free to reach out. I think that this is the most accessible level of government that there is. I know everyone at this dais wants to hear from each and every one of you about how we can best make decisions on your behalf and serve the future of our city. So thank you so much. Well, congratulations. And now with that, we have one piece of business to do before we end the evening. And that is the election of council president and council president pro tem.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move. Let's see, how do we do this? I would like to make a motion to nominate Elaine Clegg for president. And I would also like to make, in that same motion, Holly Woodings for president pro tem of the council.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion?
Well, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm all for it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I just want to thank Council President Pro Tem Sanchez for that nomination. A year ago, when I left leadership, it was during a time when we had children attending school at home. We were all working from home and trying to navigate this life that none of us envisioned having while navigating a pandemic on behalf of the city. It was just a lot. So stepping down was, I think, a really hard decision, but it was one that I had to do at the time. It's been interesting, though, spending a year outside of leadership after having spent a year inside of leadership. And then speaking to all of my wonderful colleagues about their experiences on council and really coming to a realization that we have some things just in our own housekeeping that I think we can really improve as far as processes, as far as how things are delineated, how things are more transparent for the public in the business that we do. And I really look forward to taking on that challenge over the next year to accomplish all of those things on behalf of my wonderful colleagues. So thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, a couple of things. I think one, and first is to thank Councilmember Sanchez for her last year in service in the pro tem role. I remember one of the very first things that you did after being elected in the pro tem position was you came and you asked me how you could do better. How you could be helpful in that role as pro tem. The same way that you just asked the, the community on how you could do better. And that means a lot. It means a lot to be able to go up to somebody and say, I really want to do a good job at this position. How would you recommend that I should do that? So I want to thank you for the last year of service. And I'm glad that I get to continue to serve with you, even not in the pro tem role. To the rest of our council members and our new council member as well. I think one of the things that I truly enjoy about being up here is that we don't always agree on anything. And I think you could actually go into past record keeping and you would find that there's probably been more split decisions in the last two years than there have been in the last eight years. And I really think that that's a good thing. I think that as we come up here and we make these decisions in front of a live audience and we have the ability to do that in a way that allows us to disagree without being disagreeable is really, really something that's unique to our city. And I really believe that our new pro tem and our existing president helped lead the way in doing that since I've been here. So thank you for creating that environment. And I look forward for the next couple of years.
Madam Mayor. Well, I want to thank all my fellow council members for the honor of being nominated as president again. I want to particularly thank Council President Pro Tem Sanchez for her support and her hard work over this last year. And let her know how much growth I've, I've seen, I think all of us have seen in her leadership in that time. And frankly, look forward to a time when you'll be back in a position of leadership in the future. You know, it's an interesting position to be in at the moment. Having been here for 18 years and the next longest-serving council member at this point has only been here four years. And this group could have easily kicked me to the curb and said, hey, we're the New Kids on the Block and we're ready to go. And I can't tell you how much it means to me that you didn't do that. That you honored me this, this time again with the opportunity to lead, lead this council in, I think, what will be, I, I think, a bit of a transition, a bit of a difficult time. Moving from having at-large seats, everyone having had people all over the city voting for them to districts where, at least during the election season, you're really focused on that one area of town and trying to figure out how to take that and continue that, that spirit that Councilmember Hallie Burton talked about, which is, this is one city. It's one team. Our values up there on the wall really mean something to us. There's nothing we can't do better. We want to provide this community with wow experiences, but we want to do it as one city and one team. How do you move from where we've been to where we're going and continue that, that spirit? And so thank you for the opportunity to lead into that. I look forward to it. I look forward to working with each one of you on figuring out what that way forward is and then building this team, this new team to be just as strong as the teams we've had in the past. Because we certainly have a tremendous amount of talent up here. And it's heartening to me, having been here as long as I have, to see the new talent and the new passion, ready to go forward with the new challenges that the city has. And Madam Mayor, I'd like to, to you say that, at least for me, and I believe for this team, we stand ready to work with you and your team for the betterment of the city, to figure out the ways that all of us can work together, pull together in one direction so that we do continue to see the progress that we've seen over the last couple of decades toward a place that is more inclusive, a place that has better processes, a place where people know that their government is doing everything it can to be both efficient and effective and lead in climate change, lead in transportation, lead in housing, lead in the things that each of them are feeling in their lives every day and know that they can count on us to continue to be a voice for them to continue to make this city, I think, the best city in the United States to live in. I've never been more honored to serve in it. And thank you so much.
All right. Well, with that, clerk, we call a roll. Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And with that?
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Host, we are adjourned.